I would like to advise all those present that notice of this regular meeting of April 17th, 2024, has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey. Notice of time and place this meeting has been included in the annual notice of meetings, which was posted and filed with the city clerk and with the Jersey Journal and the Star Ledger. An additional notice of time and place was posted and filed with the city clerk and was forwarded to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on April 15th, 2024. The regular meeting of the Municipal Council of the City of Bayonne is now in session. Ms. Medina, please call the roll.
Mr. Booker?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Ms. Weimer?
Here.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 33, Planning and Development Regulations, and Chapter 35, Zoning Regulations, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held February 14th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting, should be, of April 17th, at the meeting of March 13th, 2024, and was postponed to this meeting of April 17th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution given the ordinance's second reading is moved by Councilmember Perez. Mr. LaPalooza, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 33, Planning and Development Regulations, and Chapter 35, Zoning Regulations. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Does anybody want to speak on O1?
No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close? And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
O2 is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, New Jersey, adopting a redevelopment plan entitled 455-461 Avenue C redevelopment plan for the property located at 455-461 Avenue C, which is identified as Block 219, lots 24.01, as shown on the official tax map of the city pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held March 13th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of April 17th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing.
Madeline, I have to interrupt you just for a moment. Whereas there was a discrepancy in the report filed with the planning board in connection with the redevelopment plan for 455-461 Avenue C with respect to the building height, and whereas this discrepancy can be solved by virtue of a de minimis change to the ordinance currently under consideration, so now therefore be resolved that the ordinance shall be amended to reflect the following: minimum building height stories, five stories and 55 feet; the maximum building height would be six stories and 68 feet.
Okay, and that would be a resolution after the public hearing, because it's an ordinance, so people can come up and talk about this. After the public hearing is concluded and you've complete your discussions, I think that would be the prudent time to make the motion to amend the ordinance, and then the ordinance would be voted on, if that ordinance, if that resolution is approved, then the ordinance would then be voted on with that de minimis change. I believe we have the developer's attorney here today to affirm that this limitation that's set forth, and this arises out of a discrepancy in the report that was issued by our planner on March 11th as opposed to March 13th, there was a, the word minimum was used instead of the word maximum, and this will cure that. But I think it would be prudent if, when this motion is made for this resolution after the public hearing, that we have the developer's attorney come up and confirm that the, this indeed, for him, is also a de minimis change. Because I don't, I don't think it, you could really believe that a planner would say your building has to be a minimum of five stories and 55 feet. I think what he meant to say was a maximum, but I think the, the cure is that, or if that's the minimum, then maximum is six stories and 68 feet, so. But that would be after you have your public hearing, if anybody wanted to come up and talk about this, now would be the time to talk about it.
So I have a resolution moved by the council president, giving the ordinance second reading. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, New Jersey, adopting a redevelopment plan entitled 455-461 Avenue C redevelopment plan for the property located at 455-461 Avenue C, which is identified as Block 219, lot 24.01, as shown on the official tax map of the City of Bayonne pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Madeline, before I place my vote, I'd like to make all of my colleagues, as well as the community, aware. Okay, I guess we can push, okay. So we'll, we'll, we can go ahead and push, but I'm, I have no objections to this project the way we have worked it out, so I vote aye.
And Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And then we have a resolution to amend. Would you like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on that motion to amend, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. We, Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Do you want to take comments from Mr. Moselli?
Mr. Moselli? Good evening. For the record, Michael Moselli, I'm the developer's attorney. As Mr. Coffey stated, there were, there were two memos issued in connection with this redevelopment plan, some, a memo on March 11th before the planning board meeting cleaned up some little nit-nat things to the redevelopment plan, and then there was the hearing in front of the planning board on March 12th, and then on March 13th, that March 11th memo got supplemented with a oops, we, you know, the redevelopment plan says minimum is five, five stories, 55 feet, we're okay with it going to, instead of that, which would allow us to go whatever height we wanted to, we're okay with going to six stories, 68 feet.
Okay, and that, that's what the motion said, and you're comfortable with the fact that it, for you, it's a de minimis, it's, for us, it's de minimis, it corrects something, so.
Agreed.
All right, and then, then the next thing would be the vote on the ordinance as amended.
And a resolution ordering final passage as amended.
Move it.
Second.
So, with that being said, before we go, Madeline, and take our vote, so, as is, as is customary, I have been the eternal thorn in Mr. Moselli's side, a place which I hold near and dear. So I will share with everyone that we have made some improvements, and I think why that the amendment of that ordinance is not a big deal, because we had already asked Mr. Moselli and the developers to keep the project below those and within those, those terms already, which they had agreed to. So it, it does not exceed what is being, what has been allowed for and approved in the amended ordinance, so I'm very happy about that. It will not be a hugely large building standing out on the corner. In addition, we have improved, we've worked together and improved both their choice of colors, as well as the streetscape, the view from the ground, so that when our community is walking by, you're not walking by a brick wall, you're not, you know, you're looking in through some clear glass, you're looking into some wonderful, warm streetscapes, so all of that has been incorporated as well. The ground floor has also been pushed back as we requested, which allows for a greater area for pedestrian traffic and bicycling and things of that nature. As we said, the height is appropriate, and most important, what this project is going to do for our community is, it is going to provide for, pay for, and even undertake the work for the community park that is located directly across the street on 18th Street and Avenue C. It will encompass, this plan will encompass total refurbishment of that park as well, which will be inclusive for all children of varying abilities to utilize that area, and it will become what, what should be a wonderful recreation area for our children in that neighborhood. So I am 100% in favor of this project, and I thank the developer, as well as his attorney who's here with us, for putting forth that contribution to our community, so thank you.
And with that, on the resolution for final passage, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
I vote aye on this, but I reiterate my call from last week. This and several items on the agenda tonight are, for lack of a better phrase, they have been in the pipe. So it would be unfair at the goal line to change the rules of the game. But going forward, I think we should look at, especially on items such as this, a resolution that I hope to introduce next month and then vote on subsequent, of new multifamily developments providing 20% workforce or AMI-regulated units. I am especially reminded of this tonight, because last night, a Board of Ed meeting was held where raises were meted out to administration, as well as the potential for a 2% tax increase. Several things need to be said. One, that increase comes from the school board, not from this body. Two, when it hits your wallet, don't blame the teachers, because from what I saw of the agenda, they didn't see dollar one. And when we look at what's happening in our community and communities throughout the country, it is important that we take player, take care of the working man, because as somebody who reports to a classroom every day, it reminded me that the working man might be considered a second-class citizen while the wealthy do very, very well here and throughout the country. And, and this ordinance that I propose is especially necessary. Just from our census data alone, in 2023, the average tax in the city was $10,400. The average teacher in years one through 10 makes up to $63,000, which means you're taking home anywhere from $36,000 to $41,000, and the average rent as of 2024 was $2,100, which means you've spent half your income just keeping the, the door locked and the roof over your head before you even reach for the light switch. It is a crisis, and if I, if I appear emotional, or combative, or loud, it is because I'm trying to use a tone that will cut through the din created by the decaying moral corpse before us. This is a civil rights issue. It's an issue that needs to be dealt with, because providing dignity, providing the means to keep the wolf from the door and your roof over your head is important. And especially when we look at it from this perspective, where you can, you can do something that does not require the government to add dollars, it just requires some oversight, I think is important, and it would give renters, it would give homeowners even dignity, because it doesn't show any signs of decreasing inflation, cost of living, and so on.
Mr. Carroll, this also comes on top of the state aid giving $20 million to the Board of Ed. I know that you and I had discussed this, but didn't mention it this time, so. Anyway, well, we'll study that a little bit more, and we'll revisit that, I'm sure.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
O3 is an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson State of New Jersey, amending ordinance number O-23-52, approving an amended and restated financial agreement by and between the City of Bayonne and 197 Avenue E Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 197 Avenue E, to correct the scribbler's error where the subject property was incorrectly identified as Block 221, lots 12.02, and to correct the block and lot as Block 221, lot 12.01, as shown on the official tax map of the city. It was also introduced at the first, given first reading at the meeting of March 13th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of April 17th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution given the ordinance's second reading is moved by the council president. Ms. Weimer, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending ordinance number O-23-52, approving an amended and restated financial agreement by and between the City of Bayonne and 197 Avenue E Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 197 Avenue E, to correct the scribbler's error where the subject property was incorrectly identified as Block 221, lot 12.02, and to correct the block and lot, to Block 222, lots 12.01, as shown on the official tax map of the city. And the council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
O4 is an ordinance amending ordinance number O-23-59, authorizing the execution of an encroachment agreement by and between the City of Bayonne and 197 Avenue E Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 197 Avenue E, to correct the scribbler's error where the subject property was incorrect, incorrectly advertised, and I think that's the wrong. It's the same thing, was to correct the block and lot from Block 221, lots 12.02, to correct the two, Block 221, lot 12.01. And, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held March 13th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of April 17th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by the councilmember Booker, given this ordinance's second reading. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, amending ordinance number O-23-59, authorizing the execution of an encroachment agreement by and between the City of Bayonne and 197 Avenue E Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 197 Avenue E, to correct the scribbler's error where the subject property was incorrectly identified as Block 221, lots 12.02, and to correct the block and lot to Block 221, lot 12.02, as shown on the official tax map of the city. And the council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest, bless you. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move it.
And on that, motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it. Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
O5 is an ordinance vacating those lands and premises known as a portion of Memorial Drive North, Veterans Memorial Highway, and Harbor Place, more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here to pursuant to, and in accordance with NJSA 40:67-1, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held March 13th, was, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of April 17th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez, given the ordinance's second reading. Ms. Weimer, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the City of Bayonne vacating the lands and premises known as a portion of Memorial Drive North, Veterans Memorial Highway, and Harbor Place, more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here to pursuant to, and in accordance with NJSA 40:67-1. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move. Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
O6 is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne vacating those lands and premises known as Road B and a portion of Memorial Drive North, more particularly described in Exhibit A attached to, pursuant to NJSA colon, 40:67-1, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held March 13th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of April 17th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution given the ordinance's second reading is moved by the council president. Ms. Weimer, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the City of Bayonne vacating those lands and premises known as Road B and a portion of Memorial Drive North pursuant to NJSA 40:67-1. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move. Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
O7, I will take a motion to postpone to the meeting of May 15th. Would you like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on the motion to postpone, O7, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
O8 has been withdrawn. O9 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 19, Fire Prevention and Protection, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held March 13th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, for, would be considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of April 17th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by the council president, given the ordinance's second reading. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Thank you.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 19, Fire Prevention and Protection. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Madeline, I just want to point out to everyone that our fire department does a wonderful job and ensures that they meet their requirements of doing these inspections and running these tests each and every year upon the time that they should, so I do appreciate that, and I, I'd also like to point out that the last time these fees were raised, in his own words, Jay Coffey had blond hair, so it's been quite some time. So I, I thank you for keeping them reasonable for as long as we possibly can, could have, and with that, I vote aye.
I'm never robbing a bank with you.
Mr. LaPalooza?
I also want to say I appreciate the fact that it wasn't just a large raise in one year and that they're phasing this in over three years. And with that, I, I agree with my colleague, the fire department does a great job, and we need to bring this up.
And that was when Jay Coffey had blond hair.
Right? And we need to bring this up to par for this coming year, and I vote aye.
And I have a resolution to, for final passage.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution for final passage, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Oh, ten is an ordinance amending, ordinance number oh twenty-three dash fifty-five, entitled an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter seven, traffic, to correct an error regarding the section amended to read Section seven point twenty-seven dash one, Chapter seven, traffic, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held March thirteenth, was published in the Jersey Journal, and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of April seventeenth, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by Councilmember Carroll giving the ordinance second reading. Ms. Weimer, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending, ordinance number oh dash twenty-three dash fifty-five, entitled an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter seven, traffic, to correct an error regarding the section amended to read Section seven dash point twenty-seven dash one, Chapter seven, traffic. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Oh, eleven is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter seven, traffic, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held March thirteenth, was published in the Jersey Journal, and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of April seventeenth, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez giving the ordinance second reading. Ms. Weimer, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter seven, traffic. And the council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close? And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer? Ms. Weimer?
I'm sorry, aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
First speaker is Anthony.
Thanks for letting me speak. I just wanted to start by saying I can't believe that I have to go in front of my city council to discuss a dog park that was built nineteen yards from my house. Nineteen yards. I can't understand how this was approved. I can't even understand how this was an idea. No one in the neighborhood can. I can't understand how no one would have realized how much of a nuisance this would be for the people in O'Brien Court and Avenue A. As you all know, in October, the Cub Scouts petitioned for this dog park in the lower part of the Sixteenth Street Park. I remember the date because my own dog Bean, he died three days prior. You can't make this up. If you ask the Cub Scouts mom, they'd probably remember me as the person signing the petition with tears in my eyes. I specifically asked the Cub Scouts where they were proposing the dog park. They said the lower part of the Sixteenth Street Park, near the other amenities with parking far away from people's homes. I thought it was a great idea. So did my neighbors. The Cub Scouts even measured two spots in the lower park. On Tuesday, March nineteenth, the city started building a dog run nineteen yards from my house and others' houses. My fiance called the city's DPW office, who told her that three hundred residents have signed a dog park petition that the Cub Scouts advocated for. Those three hundred residents signed a petition for a dog park in a completely different location. No one surrounding the Upper Park area would have signed that petition if the Cub Scouts had proposed locating the dog park in the Upper Park, which borders about fifteen homes, has no parking. How many of those three hundred signatures do you think are currently being disrupted by the location that the city ultimately chose? The city wasn't transparent about the new dog location. None of the city's meeting minutes or agendas referencing locating the dog run in the Upper Park. The city hasn't even posted its meeting minutes from a month ago. The public notice posted by the city for a February public hearing was about renovations in the lower park and did not reference the dog park. The only reference to the dog park being proposed in the upper location is buried in a YouTube video on the city's YouTube channel with a mere hundred subscribers. In that video, Tommy Cotter, the DPW head, labels the Upper Park as quiet. Perhaps it's quiet because there's fifteen houses bordering it? He actually proposed bringing the Cub Scouts to the Upper Park to see if they liked the spot, and he said the Upper Park was a place where everyone would be happy. If the city had notified the residents of this idea, they would have foreseen that the residents would in fact not be happy. Moreover, why did the Cub Scouts receive notification and a chance to visit and opine on the new location? The local residents didn't even receive the courtesy. Cotter also said the park was underutilized, and he proposed adding lights, a sprinkler system, and turf, costing about a half a million dollars. Did he ask the local residents if it was underutilized? Did he ask the Bayonne residents if spending half a million dollars to turn a frequently used residential park into a dog park is a good use of all of our money as taxpayers? I've been told that the city voted for the dog park, but that Cotter finalized the location. I didn't vote for Tommy Cotter. I voted for the people sitting in front of me. When Mayor Davis took that picture touting the success on getting a dog park in, did he look behind him at the row of houses less than twenty yards from the dog park? Did he think about those residents? The residents vote and pay taxes. Dogs don't. The first day the fence posts went in, I walked out to the dog park and happened to meet Cotter. I'm sure you all know what he said to me, but I'm going to reiterate it to let everybody know. He told me, and quote, "I could put a Ferris wheel next to your house and blast music all day if I wanted." I cannot believe that an elected official that I voted for would appoint someone who would talk that way to a Bayonne resident. I can't believe that Cotter, someone who oversees Bayonne's public spaces, was so ill-informed about the state and local noise ordinances. Shouldn't someone in charge of the city parks be more educated about the noise levels of the dog parks? And if they didn't have that knowledge, shouldn't they have the common sense to proactively research any of that information? Shouldn't someone in charge of the city parks be more knowledgeable about how many people actually use that Upper Sixteenth Street Park? There are dozens of people in that small pocket park, including camps and a lot of other gatherings. Cotter put the dog park right in the middle of the park, around a pre-existing circular walkway. People have to recreate around a fenced-in dog park in an area that takes up fifty percent of the park. I've seen elderly people simply walking and getting barked at. I've seen parents pushing baby strollers, getting aggressively barked at. Children are now sandwiched in the corner of the park and trying to play soccer and recreate. I've seen a lot of people walking their dogs, and they get barked at because, right, not all dogs use dog parks. Some owners have really shy dogs, other owners have reactive dogs. Other owners don't want to bring the bacteria in the dirt that comes in from a dog park into their homes. So essentially, this is no longer a residential pocket park for residents. It is a dog park for a specific subset of residents. I'm sure you all know that if there's one thing that Bayonne residents are really passionate about, it's parking. People are driving to this new dog park, and because it's at the top of the park, they park in the neighborhood. The hundreds of parking spots in the lower park aren't even being used for visitors to the dog park because they're way too far to walk. My neighbors, tax-paying residents, come home from a long day of work and have to park blocks away. Did the city take how many people would drive to this new location into consideration? Clearly, they didn't. I've seen it with my own eyes. And that's fine. The city can make as many bad decisions with its property as it wants. It doesn't have to give residents notice. It doesn't have to consider parking, traffic issues, environmental issues. City officials might even think that there are already enough public parks. But the city can't create a nuisance to its residents. Installing a dog park in the backyard of O'Brien Court residents and in the front yards of Avenue A residents is exactly that. A nuisance that interferes with our daily use and enjoyment of our property. The property that we bought and the property that we pay taxes on. Did anybody consider a noise study? Did anyone consult the city planner? Did anyone do any research whatsoever about the ramifications of putting a dog park so close to residents' houses? A simple Google search would have shown you that other cities in our own county have had significant problems with dog parks much further away. The city's existing two dog parks are much, much further away from homes. The dog park has been finished for the past three weeks. Since opening, there has been countless disturbing noise violations, and we haven't even had that much good weather. There's dogs barking at squirrels at 5:30 in the morning, dogs fighting each other in the middle of the day, dogs consistently and frequently barking for whatsoever reason, to the point where I left my house on Sunday because it was so constant I couldn't take it anymore. One single dog bark can be about sixty to one hundred and ten decibels, with the majority of dog barks being between eighty to ninety decibels. I counted it, I got a decibel meter. The state's noise ordinances, which the city has adopted, states that permissible noise levels is sixty-five decibels during the day and fifty decibels at night. What do you think the decibels are when there's multiple dogs just barking constantly? Cotter didn't consider the topography of the park. It's essentially a bowl surrounded by homes, a children's playground, and the fire department. When dogs bark, there's significant amplification. I've recorded every noise violation, and I've sent some to the city. But what can we do to get the nuisance relocated away from the residential homes? Do we need to call it in the non-emergency police line every time there's a noise violation? Should we build a nuisance case against the city? Have the DP come out there? Put a dog in the park and have them measure the noise decibel levels? I've measured them myself. I live in a dog park now. The videos I've sent to the council, to the mayor, and the city planner show how much of a disturbance this dog park is. Those videos show that the dog park is significantly interfering with using and enjoying our home. I can't leave my house every time it's a nice day. It's starting to get hot, and we can't even keep the windows open because of the barking. Is the city going to reimburse me for my electric bills? What else are me and my neighbors supposed to do now? Start yelling at residents when their dogs are barking? Should we all print signs to put on our property saying that the city built this dog park and doesn't care about the residents? They only care about the dogs? Should we go on Channel twelve? Should we contact newspapers? Should we get four dogs and use the dog park as an extension of my own backyard?
You have to wrap up.
I am wrapping up, sir. So I'm standing here predominantly talking about how I've been affected, but my neighbors have it just as bad as I do, if not worse. One neighbor's baby is always woken up by the barking. Another's own dog freaks out when the other dogs start barking. So now it's just dogs barking everywhere. So I'm going to, I have much more, but I'm just going to fast forward.
You're supposed to have five minutes of talking time, so please wrap it up.
Okay. So this is not just something I'm mad about. This is something that interferes with my daily life and is a constant violation. This is not something that will just blow over without a change. I'm the nice one. My fiance, who's been a lawyer for over twenty years, is not. Trust me, I know, I never win an argument. We have the resources, and we have the connections to fight this. I sincerely hope that the city is willing to spend a nominal amount on relocating the dog park rather than hundred thousand dollars of taxpayers' money on legal fees to fight a dog park that violates the noise ordinance and disturbs so many residents. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to address the things that you mentioned. If there's a dog in the yard next door to you that's even closer than where this dog park is, and it could be multiple dogs that are allowed there, so that's another possibility that could, you know, disturb your peace. Now, wait, this is not, you had your statement, I just want to give a couple of things back and forth. When the scouts came here, the scouts were told that we could not promise them the location of where this dog park would be. They understood, they agreed to that. And there's no way that the scouts can come and tell us exactly where they want it, and we just blanket-agree with them. We have to go out and have our engineers look at where we're going to put this. And we also looked at distance from the home. So I've had discussions with Director Cotter, and we talked a little bit about this park. And you called it a pocket park. This is much larger than a pocket park. So I would say that the location, although I can understand, and we really don't want to fight with you over this, that would be the last thing we really want to do is fight with anybody. I think the intentions were very, very good to put a park that would make dog owners very happy to have that there since there was no dog park before.
You mean dog owners happy and residents unhappy?
So, again, you had your statement, I have to give my statement now, okay? Again, I'm sorry that you're unhappy about it, but there are a lot of people who contacted me that really love the dog park. And as far as what Director Cotter does, I think he does a great job in the parks, and I'll tell you how I know, because I happen to be the manager of all the county parks. And so I know what he does. And by the way, the dog parks, we have at least one in every major park in the county. So this is in addition to something that we never had before. And again, sorry for your inconvenience, but we have to try and keep everybody happy, and it's almost an impossibility to make everybody happy. So we're shooting for the majority, the most people that we can make happy. Mr. Cotter, are you okay? Do you want to say a few words, or you're fine with what I said? Okay.
I would agree with the-
Would you want to say a few words? I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. I would agree with the statement the council president said. And going forward, you have submitted videos and so forth, and if we keep an eye on the situation and you target times, perhaps we can work with the Parks Department to only open that for a certain period of the day as opposed to leaving it open in perpetuity. We could provide some sort of a hour schedule for the best time. Again, as the council president said, we're trying to make everybody happy, but it is a losing task. So let's start with small solutions that are within our possibility before we go to the extremes.
I'll begin calling the police every time I hear the city's breaking noise. That's fine.
Mr. Booker?
Excuse me, sir, how are you? Councilman Booker here. Listen, I, excuse me, I mean, I hear your argument, I understand what you're saying as a resident in that area. And I agree with my counsel and my colleagues here that we're not looking to fight about this. Okay, but what I'm saying is, there are dog owners, I'm sure, where you live, because I actually walk my dog. I don't bring him to the park, but I walk him down Sixteenth Street Park. And there are dog owners, and when we walk along the area that you're referring to, there are dogs in the yards. So there's people that have dogs there.
It's closer than the amount of-
So there, I don't know exactly where your location is, but-
I don't understand what that does to you.
No, no, what I'm saying is you're talking about the barking dogs and the ordinance. When I walk past with my dog-
I've sent, yeah, I've sent the mayor, the city planner-
All right, please, everybody gets a statement on.
I also sent you the video, so I don't mind sending the whole council-
All right, Mr. Booker, please wrap it up, cause we can't have this dialogue going back like this.
All right, well, look, I'll wrap it up real quick. But here's the deal, and what I'm trying to say to you is, and I agree with my colleague, Councilman Neil Ward, Neil Ward, I'm sorry, Neil Carroll. The fact of the matter is, we have to find a solution and work together, collaboration. And, and I think what he just stated is a fantastic idea. We have to come up with a solution in terms of hours to the park or something to that nature. We're not gonna sit here and fight over a dog park.
No, I mean, it's made, it's made my, it's made my residents as a taxpayer unlivable. You go home, you sleep peacefully. I wake up in the morning to dogs barking.
Okay, sir, we, we heard your statement.
I understand.
Thank you very much. Madeline, please call the next speaker. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Michael, we're signal.
Good evening. This coming Saturday is Earth Day. And I would like to congratulate the Department of Public Works and everything on setting up the program for Saturday, which is Clean Where You Live. And I'm hoping that all the residents of Bayonne do come out, clean where they live, clean the streets, and then they can see this garbage that's accumulating, what kind of garbage. And let them realize that this is a peninsula city. We have a great waterfront walkways around the city. And all that trash that washes up starts someplace, it starts in the streets, it starts around the homes. This is where, if it's cleaned, if it's not in the street, it won't be in the bay. If it's in the street, it's in the bay, then it's in the ocean. So I hope everybody takes part in Clean Where You Live this coming Saturday, Earth Day, and keep Bayonne clean, green. And there'll also be a barbecue and an Earth Day celebration down at 16th Street Park when it's all done, starting at 12 o'clock. Thank you again, Public Works.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And you did a great job last week with the nature club cleaning up Collins Park as well.
Thank the council for giving us support there.
Our next item is ordinance for introduction. It is an ordinance of the city of Bayon-
Excuse me, Madeline?
Yeah.
Hold on. Mr. Solari.
Tom Solari, E West Grand Street. A few things, I'd like to thank Fire Department for the job that they do for us. This year was a busy year for them. I'm hoping that we get no more fires the rest of this year. I'd like to thank Tommy Cotter, the pictures I sent you for the traffic light on E Street and Broadway. We still have some light poles that, pit poles that have to be installed. 53rd Street, you have to put a whole new foundation in near the Broadway Diner. Before somebody gets hurt, it's gonna be liable for, it's gonna be on us. So make sure the pit poles get put up, because it's, I see it every, I see it every single day of the week. They go down on the county, we gotta put them up. So I just wanna say thank you to the Fire Department, Police Department, for all the great work they do. Thank you.
Thanks, Tommy.
Okay, going back to O-12. It is an ordinance approving a financial agreement buying between the city of Bayon and Avenue E Lost Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 196-200 Avenue E, which is identified as Block 458, Lots 7, 8, and 9, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayon. And a resolution fixed in Wednesday, May 15th at 6:00 p.m. in the Dorothy E Harrington Council Chambers is the time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It's moved by the Council President. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker. Mr. Carroll? Mr. Perez? Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
O-13 is an ordinance approving a financial agreement buying between the city of Bayon and 1207-121 JFK Boulevard Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 1207-121 JFK Boulevard, which is identified as Block 24, Lots 2 and 3, as shown on the official tax map of the city. And a resolution fixed in Wednesday, May 15th at 6:00 p.m. in the Dorothy E Harrington Council Chambers is the time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It's moved by the Council President. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker. Mr. Carroll? Mr. Perez? Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
O-14 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayon, Chapter 7 Traffic, and a resolution fixed in Wednesday, May 15th at 6:00 p.m. in the Dorothy E Harrington Council Chambers as the time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It is for restrictive parking zones. And a resolution moved by Councilmember Carroll. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker. Mr. Carroll? Mr. Perez? Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa? Communications is a consent agenda. Resolution ordering the following communications to be received and filed is moved by the council as a whole and it covers C-1 through C-31. Any questions on the communications? And on the communications, Mr. Booker. Mr. Carroll? Mr. Perez? Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa? Officers' reports is a resolution moved by the council as a whole. It is a resolution ordering the following officers' reports to be received and filed and any resolutions incorporated within them to be adopted. It covers OR-1 through OR-3. Any questions on the officers' reports? And on the resolution for officers' reports, Mr. Booker. Mr. Carroll? Mr. Perez? Ms. Weemer? Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Consent Resolutions is a resolution, again, moved by the council as a whole, ordering resolutions to be received, to be adopted. It covers CR-1 through CR-20. Any questions on the consent resolutions?
Can we take CR-19 now, cause I'd like to do that separate and read that resolution? So we'll vote on everything except CR-19.
So on the remaining resolutions, Mr. Booker. Mr. Carroll? Mr. Perez? Ms. Weemer? Mr. La Palusa?
Aye. For CR-19, I'd like to read a resolution for the old Bayon Community News. Whereas the Bayon Community News was founded as the community news in 1978 by Edward Kukowski and was sold to the Hudson Reporter in 2004. And whereas the Hudson Reporter was founded in 1983 by Hoboken developer Joseph Barry. And whereas Luca Malato joined the company in 1983 and David Unger joined in 1985, both remaining minority owners until Joseph Barry sold his majority share to Malato and Unger in 1999. And whereas in 2018, the company was sold to Cherry Hill-based Newspaper Media Group. And whereas the Bayon Community News and the Hudson Reporter both worked diligently to perform, to inform the greater Bayon community of local happenings, upcoming events, and political intrigue, highlighting upstanding citizens and noteworthy organizations on a weekly basis through its special sections like Letters to the Editor, Education, Religion, and the Mayor's Column, all of which were as informative as they were entertaining and were must reads for everyone in Bayon. And whereas the Bayon Community News reporters worked diligently to get up to date and reliable information to the public during such emergencies as 9/11, the pandemic, and Hurricane Sandy. And whereas at the time of the closure of the newspaper, the Bayon Community News was populated by staff writers Daniel Israel and Jordan Cole, managing editor Gene Richings, art directors Terry Bish and Mary Helen Fink, advertising manager Tish Krasik, senior account executive Ron Krasik, and bookkeeper Sharon Metro. And whereas given how integral the Bayon Community News was to the fabric of the city of Bayon, this municipal council would be remiss if it did not recognize the cultural and historic importance of this weekly publication. Now therefore be it resolved that the municipal council of the city of Bayon hereby honors the Bayon Community News, its ownership, and its staff for the benefits they've visited upon the citizens of the city of Bayon through their collective efforts of keeping our community informed and entertained for 41 years. And be it further resolved that the municipal council of the city of Bayon hereby recognizes the closure of the Bayon Community News on January 20th, 2023, as a very sad, sad day for the city of Bayon, and formally confirms that the Bayon Community News was an important part of the lives of several generations of Bayon residents, and that it left an indelible mark on our city's culture and history. And if we can move this as a whole, I would really appreciate that.
Mr. Israel, you wanna make a comment?
Yeah, if you don't mind. Hi, how are you guys? Good evening. My name is Daniel Israel, the former staff writer for the Bayon Community News. For more than three years, I wrote for the print newspaper covering this great city, as well as its sister newspaper, the Hudson Reporter, covering six other towns, including Union City, North Bergen, Secaucus, Lee Hocken, West New York, and Gutenberg. From breaking news stories to hard-hitting investigative pieces holding officials and institutions to account, to heartwarming feature stories highlighting outstanding individuals, there was something in the Bayon Community News for everyone to read and enjoy. Covering our beats with passion and drive, it was a shock to my colleagues, manager, managing editor Gene Richings, staff writer Jordan Cole, and the rest of the editorial staff mentioned in the resolution, when the rug was pulled out from under us and we were laid off as the print newspapers closed. In the following weeks, other publications under the umbrella company that owned the Bayon Community News also suffered the same fate. So I'd like to thank the city council for commemorating the print newspaper with this resolution, following the one-year anniversary of its closure this past January. The loss of the historical, of the historic local institution right here in Hudson County is no doubt a symptom of a larger trend of the decline of the print news industry and the entire news industry in general nationwide, and it undoubtedly impacts the spread of information throughout the community and civic engagement. It is important to remember for history's sake, the impact of the Bayon Community News and the news it broke. This is especially pertinent considering the online news archive of the two print newspapers was removed from the still existent, but no longer the same, online website. The website may or may not be under a new owner, but shows signs of some type of possible AI involvement in the creation of new content. In addition, many old articles written under the former staff, such as myself and my former colleagues, were removed from the website, although some have slowly returned but with the bylines purged of the original author. Perhaps this resolution can begin the discussion of AI's impact on journalism, the industry's decline, and the implications of that right here in Bayon and Hudson County. Regardless, we cannot allow history to be deleted or rewritten. Many award-winning journalists got their start at the Bayon Community News and the Hudson Reporter, breaking hard-hitting stories in the print newspapers and their former online presence with long-lasting ramifications. While this resolution honors the staff that were laid off that day and metaphorically went down with the ship, I would like to highlight some others who were once staff members of the print newspapers and have now gone on to bigger and brighter things. This includes former editor-in-chief and now published author Kate Rounds, the late legendary sports writer Jim Hague, former staff writer and now Hoboken Communications Manager Marilyn Baer, former staff writer and now North Bergen Public Information Officer Art Schwartz, former editor-in-chief and now writer at Patch.com Karen Listner, former staff writer and now current Tap into staff writer Al Sullivan, and former staff writer and now Jersey Journal reporter Mark Couso, among many, many others. In fact, the Bayon Community News and the Hudson Reporter print newspapers are what brought me to Hudson County. The job immersed me in the worlds of Bayon and North Hudson, as well as Jersey City and Hoboken. And the stories I covered, the places I visit, visited, and the people I met touched me so deeply, I moved here to cover it better. In a time when ensuring the public is well-informed with the unbiased truth is of paramount importance, there should be more newspapers opening in Hudson County, not more closures. In order to not repeat the past, we must document it, study it, and learn from it. Local newspapers, especially print, are key in that preservation of that local history that may not otherwise be recorded anywhere else. I hope this may start a conversation about the need and importance to carve out a future that sees a reversal in the trending decline of local news. Pulitzer Prize-winning journalist Richard Kluger said, "Every time a newspaper dies, even a bad one, the country moves a little closer to authoritarianism." Thank you guys again.
Al Sullivan, you wanna say a few words?
Worked for the Hudson Reporter for 40 years. Okay, I was there pretty much through the foundation. And many of these people were great writers. I disagree with a lot of what this resolution's about honoring. I think Community News was a community newspaper.
It was a major part of a lot of people's lives. They looked forward to that delivery Tuesday night into Wednesday.
I agree. And we, we, but the real nuts and bolts of it was always the people who worked for it, not the management.
I understand.
And I have a problem honoring a history of management that did not respect the people who worked for it. I mean, I was laid off early and I got a really good severance package. They did not. Okay, these were, you know, Joe Barry, I respect, but he designed this institution to protect his real estate. The Community News is a different entity. Ed was a great man and he did great things here, but I don't, I have a problem honoring some, the legacy.
I can understand when you write a resolution like this, you have to give the history, and I can't rewrite that history.
Well, I wrote, I wrote a lot of the history. I mean, I wrote hundred, I've won hundreds of awards for this paper, okay? But I still disagree with honoring something that doesn't honor the community.
I understand.
All right?
I understand. We can agree to disagree, Hal. Gotcha, gotcha.
Anybody else? And on CR-9, Mr. Booker. Mr. Carroll? Mr. Perez? Ms. Weemer?
Al, I would like to just offer you that I think where the Council President's communication comes from is in hoping to honor the institution as a whole. And I think we all realize that it is, more often than not, the little people that truly make it what it was. So I, I hope you gain no disrespect from the honor that we bestow. It is, it is to both of you, and Dan, I, I hope you know this, that, that we owe a tremendous amount of thanks, and, and we realize who made it what it was. So with that, I, I do vote aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
It's the institution of the 41 years of this paper. So I understand what you're saying, but it's kinda commemorating the whole thing. And it was a major part of a lot of people's lives looking for that delivery, like I said, on Tuesday, for many different reasons. Some people liked looking at those letters to the editor. They disappeared the last few years. But there were always announcements, there was obituaries, there was things that we didn't even talk about. But it was your personal touch in the writings that you did, your personal touch, you know? It was the things that, the little things that people do that don't even get credit for. And that's what really made this a special, special newsprint media. Unfortunately, the way times are, you hit the nail on the head when you said people are going online for their news, and unfortunately, print is very difficult. You know, it's very near and dear to my heart. I specialize in journalism at Seton Hall. It was print journalism when I was there, cause I'm, I'm old now. But nevertheless, we have to work with these changes. And we wanna commemorate the 41 years of the Community News. And with that, I'll vote aye.
R-1 is a resolution moved by the Council President La Palusa. A resolution approving agreement modifications to enable water sewer system improvements, specifically for modifications to Bayon's concession agreement with Bayon Water Joint Veterans LLC to allow its operator Viola Water Contractors Operators USA Inc. to carry out the following projects. One, the 10th Street water and sewer line improvement. Two, Ingram Avenue stormwater discharge pipe improvement. Three, top seven lead service line replacement. And four, Oak Street sanitary pump replacement. And Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
Any questions on R-1? And on R-1, Mr. Booker. Mr. Carroll? Mr. Perez? Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R-2 is moved by Councilmember Carroll, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Remington Vernick Engineer 2, Inc., for professional engineering services for the Cottage Street Park area flood mitigation project for the lump sum fee of $163,500. Who'd like to second? And on that resolution, Mr. Booker. Mr. Carroll?
Aye. I don't need to repeat at length, we went over it last week, but this is a major step in the right direction, as is the last resolution, as much of that work is downtown. And even though I may have taken a shot at them moments ago, we talked about working hand in hand with the Board of Ed so as to use some of their parking lots for the working man who's gotta wake up and come home late and find spots on the street when they dig it up. So I vote aye.
Mr. Perez? Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R-3 is authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement buying between the city of Bayon and Avenue E Lost Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 196-200 Avenue E, which is identified as Block 458, Lots 7, 8, and 9, as shown on the official tax map of the city. It's moved by the Council President. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker. Mr. Carroll? Mr. Perez? Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R-4 is authorizing an execution of a redevelopment agreement buying between the city of Bayon and 1207-121 JFK Boulevard Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 1207-121 JFK Kennedy Boulevard, which is identified as Block 24, Lots 2 and 3. It's moved by the Council President. Mr. Perez, will you second? On that resolution, Mr. Booker. Mr. Carroll? Mr. Perez? Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R-5 is authorizing and directing the planning board of the city of Bayon to conduct a preliminary investigation to determine whether certain property located at 508 Avenue A, 510-514 Avenue A, and 134-136 West 22nd Street, which is identified as Block 208, Lot 1.01, 4, and 35, as shown on the official tax map of the city constitutes a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, and authorizing the preparation of a redevelopment plan for said property. Would like to move it?
Move it.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker. Mr. Carroll?
Yeah, I, I apologize. Director Skylander is in here. Mr. Maselli, do I recall that this is one of your projects? Do you mind if I just clarify a few things with you before we all offer our vote? I'm sorry, can you refresh my memory? This, this request is being put forth by the owner of, the current owner of the property.
Correct.
And am I correct in recalling that one is vacant, unimproved land, and one is a, a home?
Yeah, so I think a couple, I think two lots are constitute the vacant area, I think. I haven't, I, I think the one lot is, is a home, and he does own that. So all three are his. We're looking at that to see if we even need it for the redevelopment, or if we need it for setback. He wanted to include it to see if it gave us flexibility to do a different project or to create more of a buffer to the residential neighborhood. So sometimes you include properties in redevelopment areas because they're necessary for the effective redevelopment of the area. I think that's what this would qualify under. We haven't really studied it yet, but I did ask the client if he wanted to include that because it's, it's a home. And he presumably got tenants there. And he said, "Yeah, let's see, because we might need it for the design." We haven't finalized anything yet, but it might very well be that that lot is not necessary to the development, but we wanted to leave the option open and study it at least.
So it's currently rental property?
I don't, yeah, and I don't know if there's even a tenant there. I actually didn't ask him that. I assumed because it looked like it was pretty well-maintained, but, but I'm not 100% sure.
One might assume he's not leaving that with the unearned income potential.
Right.
And is, the two lots that are vacant are on the corner, the home is, let's assume it's the third property-
Yes.
-going down that street.
It is. And it was a service station, I believe, at one point.
Right, it was a service station.
And it was demolished several years ago, and it's been an empty lot since. It's sort of the- of this, it's the same developer as the one that you just approved.
Yeah, I, I recall, and we're, it was a service station, so we, do we know if there are any potential DEPA issues, or has that soil been tested?
There were probably, just like many lots, I, I would assume this is probably one of them in Bayonne that has environmental. If it is, we'll clean it up to residential standards.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Back to Mr. Carroll.
Well, I, proof of what these meetings are for, I, I was thinking something, and then the councilwoman brought something to light, and Mr. Misselli also said something that interested me. I, at first, I was thinking it's a vacant lot, it's ready to go, but, so it didn't fulfill my requirements. However, given that it might have deep DEP complications, as well as they were looking at a property to see if they would need it in the plan, as was stated by Mr. Misselli, I think is interesting, because we may want to consider going forward that some public parking be added to these projects as they go forward, and they look at that when they look at the plan, at the planning board. So it's, I will vote aye on this, with an eye towards maybe making some improvements in the, in the neighborhoods and the communities with public parking.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R six is authorizing and directing the planning board of the city of Bayonne to conduct a preliminary investigation to determine whether certain property located at six fifty-three dash six fifty-seven Avenue E, forty-seven East Forty-first, and six fifty-nine Avenue E, which is identified as block ninety-eight, slots thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne, constitutes a non-condemnation area of need of redevelopment pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, and authorizing the preparation of a redevelopment plan for said property. It's moved by the council president. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R seven is approve, authorizing and approving the transfer of a financial agreement and redevelopment agreement from Bayonne Equities B Two Urban Renewal LLC to BPT Two Eighty-One LLC.
And, and Madeline, that one is going to be pulled, because it turns out the request is actually less than that. We don't need to acquiesce to this or affirm anything. It turns out that it's just a pledging of their assets, or their interest in this in order to obtain a loan, so there isn't a transfer of anything being requested. It was misunderstood by outside counsel.
And we will move on to R eight.
And R eight, if I can just jump in before you start, on the blurb, it says it's a transfer of a portion of block three point, three oh one point oh three, lot three, to an adjoining lot. It turns out it's a portion of block three oh one point oh three, lot three, and a portion of lot two from that. Had a long, involved discussion this, today with council for the property owner, and I believe that the resolution that you have now accurately reflects that it's a, they were originally permitted to transfer a portion of lot three, block three oh one point oh three. Subsequent to that, they were granted amendment to the minority subdivision to subdivide additional land from three point, three oh one point oh three two to lot one point oh two. So this is a simple transfer, essentially to square off it and make some lots more regular.
Who would like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R nine authorizes the mayor and city clerk to an agreement, entering into an agreement with McManaman Scotland Embowelment LLC for professional legal services, including but not limited to legal representation of the city in all matters in connection with the city's water sewer utility and/or appearance, appearance on behalf of the city, to assist or supplement the efforts of the law department in such other diverse municipal law matters as may be requested or and/or approved by the city's law director for a period commencing May first, twenty twenty-four, through December thirty-first, for an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. It's moved by council member Perez. Mr. La Paluza, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R ten is authorizing and directing the planning board to conduct a preliminary investigation to determine whether the property located at one oh, one oh two and a half dash one sixteen Avenue E, which is identified as block four sixty-seven, lots ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen on the official tax map of the city, constitutes a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment pursuant to the local redevelopment housing law, and authorizing preparation of a redevelopment plan for said property.
This isn't, okay, because I've had a close eye on that area, given the incident with the elderly gentleman, so this is further north of, of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Who'd like to move it?
Well.
Second?
Yeah.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R eleven authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Remington Vernick Engineers Two, Inc. for professional engineering services for the sixty-third Street Pump Station Flood Resiliency Project Phase Two for lump sum fee of one hundred sixty-eight thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R twelve authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with New Jersey Humane Society for animal control services and animal sheltering services commencing May first, twenty twenty-four, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, for an amount not to exceed seventy-six thousand dollars.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R thirteen is awarding a contract for improvements to Dennis P. Collins Park Phase Three to Personal Giordano Construction LLC for the bid amount of four hundred fifteen thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, thirteen, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Fourteen, fifteen.
And I've just been advised that we will be going to closed session, because we do have settlement terms for R seventeen.
Do you want to do the?
So fourteen and fifteen would be off.
R sixteen, you want to do the add-ons before we?
I would do the add-ons and the walk-ons, yeah.
Okay. So, starting with ad one, is authorizing the UEZ Coordinator to take any and all actions and execute any and all documents allowing Evan Berman Productions to hold the twenty-twenty-four Bayonne Food Truck Festival and Music Festival on Saturday, May twenty-fourth, and authorizing the UEZ Coordinator to issue payment to Evan Berman Productions in order to manage, of the management fee of eighteen thousand fifty dollars.
Second.
And on that one, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
And number two is ratifying and affirming the actions of the mayor and city clerk in executing an inter-local agreement to investigate reported cases of elevated lead levels in blood and environmental monitoring of lead in paint, where there is a complaint of suspected or confirmed presence of elevated blood levels of our citizens with Hudson Regional Health Commission for a three-year period commencing March first, twenty twenty-four, and ending February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-seven, for an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, and/or twenty-nine inspections, whichever is less.
I'll move.
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
I'd like to say a couple of words on this ordinance. This is great for the people here, because I receive phone calls from people who live these and live in these apartment complexes, and they always say that they have to check the lead and that they don't feel right, and so this is great. This will, actually, people will go and get tested, and they can feel a lot better.
That's an aye.
Vote aye.
Ms. Weemer?
I vote aye as well.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Ad three is amending resolution number twenty-four oh two dash fourteen oh thirty-six, adopted February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, authorizing an agreement with UCP of Hudson County for the provisions of providing the cost of the replacement for a rooftop HVAC unit to include that the said funds in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars shall be chargeable to account number CBDG eleven eighty.
Move it.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Ad four is approving construction work hours for the property located at sixty-three dash sixty-seven New Hook Road, which property is identified as block four sixteen, lot three, as shown on the official map of the city of Bayonne.
So move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
And I gather, given that you seconded it, that this is far away from the?
So, so I, and I had every intention of, of explaining further, so I can share with everyone, again, I'm not opposed to this whatsoever. This is the developer proposing work that will not create a significant impact or noise impact on the community, and doing so through the evening hours, the overnight hours, to limit the disruption to ongoing city traffic or pull on our police resources and, and traffic control, and it is in a non-residential area located at the far end of Hook Road. So my intention is to vote aye.
And, and I vote aye as well.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Ad five is approving construction hours for the property located at sixty-nine dash seventy-three La Fonte Way.
And this is far away from homes for me as well.
Same, same comments.
Same comments, pretty much. It's a warehouse. We'd like to see it finished quicker, and by allowing them to do this, it will get done sooner.
And, and limit the impact.
With minimal effect on the residents. There's, it's really other warehouses around it.
Who'd like to move it?
No, no, it's bullshit.
I'll move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Last one is from the Honorable James M. Davis, reappointing and appointing the following individuals to the rent control board.
Move.
And on that one, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
I, I, I vote aye. I think these are some good people. I think they can handle some potentially more work in the future, and I'm glad the board exists and we're continuing to pay attention to it.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
And we go to R sixteen, which authorizes the municipal council to go into a closed session for the pending discussion and litigation. Who'd like to move it?
As a whole?
You can move it as a whole. And on R sixteen, to go into closed session, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Coffey, will we be coming back out?
We will be coming out, and there will, in all likelihood, be action in connection with the R seventeen.
And motion to reconvene?
Motion.
And motion to reconvene, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Get your pen out now.
And we will not be taking further action on R seven. They have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.